All right, Jonathan, you are all ready to go streaming to YouTube and open to attendees.
All right. Thanks, everybody. It's four o'clock. It is Thursday, November 11th, and we are here for a work session. It is entitled Rules of Code of Conduct. And I don't, I think this is, this is council-driven. This is not a staff-driven request that we've been working on. And just to kind of, kind of give everybody the history, that's, I guess, the two people watching from the public. One is, is a reporter and the other one is admin assistant. You know, this, this has started really when I got on council. I wanted to have a conversation. This is 2017. Shelley was there. And Steve Davis was there. He's not able to join us this evening for this work session. But we did have a conversation on, you know, how as a group, a new group at that time, there's three new counselors. How do we want to interact, react? How do we want to talk to each other, about each other, about the topics? How do we want to correspond that in public? How do we want to maintain our voices as individuals and individuals who are elected, but yet at the same time be able to be honoring of the body as, as a whole? And I think those are two different things. We always can have our voice, but at the same time, we don't want to be working in cross-purpose with what we're all trying to do. We're all here for the same purpose, which is to move the city forward. And so we started having those conversations again. That was, you know, three and a half years ago. And then I believe Shelley and Shelley can jump in anytime and interrupt, but it won't be interrupting because I'm asking her to. But she went to a conference, I believe, in Littleton or went to a conference and heard about how Littleton had a code of conduct that spoke to some of these items, spoke to how you post on Facebook, how you do these things. And so we talked about it. I don't think it wasn't ever brought to a formal vote with the previous council. And then this council was seated and is always just kind of something that we had out there. And then, hey, we, we had some makeups, right? Like, I think it's not a secret. We, we had some decorum issues and we had some, some other issues that I think a code of conduct could have spoken to. And so this code of conduct, at least in my, my opinion and my history with it, is something that's been three and a half years in the making and has never just come before us to get a vote. This current iteration has been, I think, you know, Rick and Charlie kind of worked on it for the last, like, six months, probably. So I guess, you know, with, with Charlie taking some of the legalese role in this, I'll be asking him maybe to kind of go through a little bit of the fine points, just to refresh all of us and where we're at. And then, yeah, let's kind of dig in and see what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, and see if we can get this thing adopted. And I don't know that it's going to take an hour and a half. So an hour and a half is not aspirational. It's just, it's there. So Shelley, do you want to talk a little bit about the history of it, too? I'd love for you to get your input on it.
Sure. And that was a, it was, I think, an effective governance workshop that I went to. And they held up kind of the Littleton Code of Conduct that had been adopted by the City of Littleton and put together a couple of years prior to that as kind of a model. And CML was holding that up as a model for other municipalities to use as code of conduct for their governance. So I brought those documents back. They were a little bit shorter than, I think, what we're considering tonight. But I think Charlie has worked on it quite a bit. And I think a lot of the same concepts are in there in the code of conduct part. And so, yeah, I look forward to the discussion. I think these are good kind of rules of procedure and conduct for council members to look at having on our books going forward.
Yeah. And so Charlie, do you want to, I guess, maybe kind of take us through how, at least, because you and Shelley and Rick and Tony, I believe, too, initially formed a subcommittee. Maybe the subcommittee was everybody, me, I don't remember. But can you talk a little bit about that subcommittee and how you kind of arrived at, and what is this? Like, it's not really a rough draft. It's a little bit more than that, but I'll call it a rough draft right now.
It's a draft. Yeah. So shortly after the situation occurred this past spring where we all did our things, I'll just leave it at that. We talked about this again, and I took the, Shelley gave me the Littleton Code. I reached out to CML and they provided me, at one point I had them all here, seven or eight or nine different codes. And I did two things. One is I did a summary, which I think you all received, of the, the current municipal code and charter provisions, just so we had a sense of that. And then kind of, that was a rough draft of the Littleton Code with some modifications based on what some of these other codes had in them. About that same time, I took the Effective Governance Seminar, which at that point, of course, was by Zoom. And Bob Widener, who is now the chairman of the CML Board and is an attorney, and chairman of the city, Carl Brugno, he's a city attorney for one of the municipalities. He had come up with Widener's Rules of Procedure. And so I took Widener's Rules of Procedure and modified them to come up with the document called, well, it's City of North Springs Modified Rules of Procedure. And it might be a place for the start because it gets fairly easy document. This, I thought, was important. It wasn't really something we talked about at the beginning, but I thought it was important because we've had a few times where, well, is my motion, your motion, or is it amended motion, or what is it? And we may never follow these rules, but they're a little clearer than Robert's Rules of Order. They're four pages long. I originally hoped to make them two pages so we could put it on a ADEP by eleven sheet of paper, laminated. Whenever we get back into City Hall, we could just have it on our desk and flip it over if we needed rules. In this case, it's two rules, but it's still, if we, if we double side it, we can have two pages of rules, which are fairly easy for everyone to look at. So the concept of the rules procedures, I'll start there, is just to kind of take what we already do and then make sure that we have specific rules of how we move forward and through a meeting. And again, part of this also came out of the fact that I was trying to deal with rules procedure in a meeting in conjunction with the code of conduct was finding difficult to do so because some applied to one place and not the other. With that, I guess, I just, if anybody has questions on the rules procedure, comments, suggestions for changes, I have it open in front of me. I can make edits as we're talking. And hopefully, we can get this one adopted fairly quickly without, I wouldn't think this is real controversial, but.
I have a question, Charlie. On the rules of procedures, and again, I didn't do a side-by-side comparison with Roger's Rules, Robert's Rules of Order, but, you know, it's easy for us always to refer to that kind of standard document. Are these in line with that? And is it just kind of a pared-down version? Or are there differences here that are going to, you know, have to cause our attorney to say, well, we have to refer to this standalone kind of city document versus what's standard procedure in other municipalities?
So the answer to that is yes and yes. Generally speaking, they're in line with Robert's Rules of Order. Yes, they're a very simplified version. And I think, it's been a while since I've read these, but I think that there's a provision in here that if it's not here, then we fall back to Robert's Rules of Order. But this would become, and I probably would probably talk about how we adopt them, but I assume it'd be by ordinance as more resolution, but one way we'd adopt them. And some of the code provisions, municipal code provisions would need to be changed because there are some inconsistencies. For instance, we have five-minute comment periods as council, as people appear for a council in the municipal code. And here, we go back to our standard, which we've been using for years, which are three-minute comment periods. So for the most part, it's a simplified version of Robert's Rules of Order. And I took Bob Widener's rules that he uses and he, and he knows I took and used his, but that he uses for his councils. I think he represents one or two cities and try to give them a simplified set of rules, how to operate immediately effectively. And if we don't get in problems, and we'll never look at these, but if we have problems, this is a resource for us to go back. And of course, our esteemed city attorney could also immediately interpret these and tell us what they mean if we don't understand them. So. Did that answer your question? I'm a lawyer. Took two of them to answer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would just follow up and say that these are really pretty consistent. We've, in various places, have used kind of a simplified version of Robert's Rules. Keeping in mind, Robert's Rules are designed to use in a chamber of 335 people. And so they're designed about much larger group dynamics, and so they tend to be awkward. I think Charlie's done a really good job of trying to hone it down to the things that we really do on a daily basis.
Yeah, Robert's Rules of Procedure, I think, are like 500 pages.
Yes. And will these go into the charter or would these be adopted by kind of ordinance and go into the municipal code?
I would suggest that we adopt them probably by resolution and we remove from the code kind of the procedure that we have in there now, except to refer to it being adopted via resolution by the council. And the reason I say that is that in moments like this where we're all online, it would be a lot easier to amend a resolution with some procedure to, to change it up because of differing circumstances than to keep stuffing things in the code that really don't need to be there.
Ingrid, Paula, and I saw Tony's hand up. It looks like it came down. So I'll go Ingrid and Paula.
Okay. I had one question. It was just, actually, I think, maybe just a clarification on how it was written. And it's in paragraph, let's see, decorum. I think it's D. Let me find it again. It just said, it says argumentative and then argument. Let's find it. Yeah. Okay.
Possible, and I've got a word issue, Ingrid.
Under paragraph D, item four, there was just maybe a little clarification on that one. It just says, position clearly and without being argumentative argument. So I think it just needs to be.
I'm not following where you are. Can you?
Yeah, sure. Page three.
Okay, down there. Okay.
Paragraph D. Number four. The last two words.
I have number four being motion to continue indefinitely. So I'm clearly not the same place you were. D four, is that where you were?
I meant D four on page three.
I think that's in a different section, Ingrid. That's under the Code of Conduct.
Yeah.
And we're talking about.
We're just talking about the rules of procedure right now.
Rules of procedure.
That's why I couldn't find what you're talking about.
That's what happens when the newbie asks a question. What I'm doing. Thanks, guys.
Kitty, of course.
Oh, when we get to that section, I'm going to want to address that with you.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, because I had, I had seen that highlighted that same thing.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Shelley. I appreciate it.
Ingrid, you're not allowed to talk again until December.
Totally. Like, come on.
These rules.
Yeah, that was. I'm gonna wait until we get to Code of Conduct to ask the next question.
You're fine. You're fine. Go ahead, Paula.
Well, I'm not going to get to talk till December either because, Ingrid, I did the same thing. Figure out those of orders. I had a question about the code of conduct. So there we go. I'll wait.
Okay, okay. Fair enough. Is there, does anybody else have any questions about this document specifically? This is the Modified Rules of Procedure, which is just a simplified version of Robert's Rules of Order. I'm like paraphrasing, right? So can we, is anybody have a problem with, well, we can't take a motion and everything like that, but if this did come before us to take a vote on, would everybody be okay just passing this section in its current state?
I don't have a problem. I, I read through them pretty thoroughly and they do look more simplified and they're still kind of in line with how we somewhat loosely run things, so.
So Mr. Mayor, my recommendation would be if this is acceptable, to have the city attorney and staff figure out how do we adopt these? And that may take an ordinance to amend the code to get rid of some of the contradictory provisions. And Carl, I know we had, I saw an email yesterday about executives, not executive sessions, notice of meetings of boards and commissions. And I don't know whether we want to talk about that today or not, because it's really not.
Yeah, I think let's get through the council stuff and then we'll do an ancillary on boards and commissions.
Okay.
Because I think there's a lot to talk about how we use our boards and commissions and, and roles that probably could use some tweaking as I was going through and answering that question yesterday.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to the main event, the actual Code of Conduct, pages one through nine?
Okay. Want me to start out with that again?
I would love that. I would love that, Charlie. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So as I, as I said, kind of earlier in my summary, I went through and took the Littleton Code of Conduct, I think Windsor and so I did a variety of different sizes of communities, looking for some that were closer to the community the size of Glenwood. And looked at what other communities have done with respect to setting up the standards for how we, for lack of a better term, behave in council meetings. And, you know, we as attorneys have ethical, an ethical standard we have to follow. Realtors have, you have a code of ethics. I think they have, a lot of, a lot of different organizations do. And so this is, for lack of a better term, an ethical code for us as city council to follow. Just kind of run through in general, and I don't want to waste a lot of time, but just the purpose, general rules regarding members. Three Rs came out of, I think, the Littleton Code. It's clearly plagiarized. I wouldn't have come up something as creative as three Rs, so. But I thought, I thought it, it, it really did a good job of kind of talking about three different things we do as council members. A little lot of details on that. Then part three, and I don't know what page your mind is, I don't know the page numbers in front of me, on decorum, how we actually do things. And then part four is our interactions with staff. Part five deals with boards and commissions. And then six deals with executive sessions. Seven is a combination of things that other municipalities had and discussions that occurred during our subcommittee meeting or some, with a committee meeting and follow-up between, as Rick and I tried to take those, those, our discussions, and I can't remember, we had one or two meetings as a committee, and try to fine-tune potential sanctions. And I think in the sanctions part of it, these are just suggestions that came out of, out of the, out of the committee. And I'm not saying all committees support every, every recommendation, but the general idea of what sanctions would be. Carl's going to have to weigh in on some of those as to whether or not they're actually enforceable or not. And then I kind of, as a throwaway, and not in a bad way, but I found in one of the codes is the section on personal expectations. And some of this may be repetitious with the, with the first part, the three R part of it. But I thought it, you know, a lot of the language was different. And I thought it really was kind of, again, this is how we want to be seen, in my view, how I want to be seen as a city council member to the public and to each of you as fellow council members. So that's all, really. I mean, and I know Paula has some questions. You sent me and Ingrid, you indicated I have some typos, which certainly, I've read this thing about seven times, so I argumentative and argumentative, I easily could mess up and other things. So I'm not wedded to any language, if that makes a difference.
Questions, comments, thoughts? Go ahead.
Go through it section by section and see where we are and.
I think that'd be helpful. But Shelley and Paula have questions first, so, or comments, so I'm inclined, yeah, to kind of just run through it. Go ahead, Shelley.
Yeah. And I just wanted to say thank you, Charlie. You put a lot of time into this and really appreciate it. I went through it in quite a bit of detail, so I have some typos and comments, like, all the way through it. So maybe it's better to let Charlie go through it first and then I'll go through all my suggested comments and edits afterwards.
Okay. So purpose.
Hold on, hold on. We got a couple more questions. We got Paula and then Tony. Go ahead, Paula.
Just in general, the kind of two things, and I'll bring them up as we come across them, but one is somewhere in there, and I can't remember which page, so I apologize for that, but we ask that members of the public address the council as a whole and not direct comments specifically to council people and when they're making a comment. And I think the same rings true for fellow council members. When we're discussing something, I really, I wanted to make sure that we implied that in there as well. And I kind of read through it going, am I hearing that? Am I hearing that? And I didn't quite, so maybe somebody can point that out. But when we're having a discussion, it's not about each of us personally. It's about an issue that we're trying to resolve. So it'd be great if we could have that distance. And then the other thing is, some of it, and I'll come back to this later when we're talking about stuff, is really specific on, you know, an example would be, you know, if we have a comment to, you know, if we're discussing something at city council that we direct our questions to the manager or Carl, city manager or Carl, Deborah, or Carl. And then they will ask this appropriate staff, and that felt a little cumbersome to me. So I just want to be very careful when we put this in writing that we have. I think one of the things that I really appreciate about our council meetings is the way we can talk directly to staff and say, you know, Matt, I don't quite understand this, or Terry, can you explain this? And not have to say, Deborah, can you ask Terry what such and such means? So I just want to be careful on how restrictive we are. And I understand we need some parameters, but I don't want to overdo it either. So those are just in general things that I thought of.
Okay. Go ahead, Tony. Thanks, Paul.
Hi, I think my comment, I'm just going to make a brief comment so that you guys can proceed with this because I'm not in support of any of this. I just wanted to read you all something. Congress shall make no law respecting establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. Anything in this document that I would never sign off on that attempts to abridge my free speech rights or anybody's free speech rights, or affects legislative immunity, or deals, or violates the Supreme Court rulings in cases like New York Times v. Sullivan, is unenforceable nonsense and a colossal waste of time. These, you know, people misunderstand the First Amendment. Sometimes I think it applies, like, if I write a letter to the Post and Independent, they have to print it because that's my free speech right. No, that is not. It's government action. And I can't think of anything more clear than this government body trying to tell people what they can and cannot say. So I'm not going to sign off of this, to support this, but I'll keep my mouth quiet for this portion of the meeting from now on. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. All right. So Charlie, let's take it from the top. I think that's a great idea. We'll just kind of go through it. And I have my notes, too. If there, anybody else has notes, I think, just feel free to jump in and interrupt Charlie or the proceedings. Don't raise a hand. Just, just go for it.
Okay. So the first section on purpose, general purpose. We're held to the highest standards. Proper democratic government requires us to be independent, impartial, responsible. We must exhibit appropriate behavior at all times. And it applies to us while we're serving as a member of city council, not just during meetings, but in, in other forums. So if I go out and make a speech at the Kiwanis Club or Lions, or I'm at the chamber and making a comment, I need to continue to follow the, the code of conduct. And I guess I want to just address what, what Tony said. And I don't think, and I could be proven wrong for sure. I don't think I did anything here which would infringe on the freedom of speech. So and Tony may have a different view, and I appreciate that, that point of view, Tony, for that exact reason, the freedom of speech. But I tried not to do this. This is more in addressing how we address each other, not what we say. But again, that's a general purpose. Comments on that section? Changes? Edits? Okay.
I didn't have any on that, Charlie. I guess in, in light of Counselor Hershey's comments, it, it would be nice if our city attorney and Carl could review this, you know, once we give direction after the work session and review it for infringements on personal liberties or.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that's, I have put off doing that, Shelley, until you guys have some consensus on what you'd like that to generally look like. I mean, I will tell you that there is, decorum is very different from, from speech. And so, you know, there are always rails as to how you exercise that right, whether it's under Gilbert v. Arizona on solicitation, or homelessness, or how you address an elected body. And I would point to, you know, the rules of the US Senate, or the rules of the US House Representative is great examples where they're, they're pretty boisterous bodies that they are able to find those side rails. So I'm sure we can, too.
Okay. Let me pick up two A, three Rs. Basically, role. Each council member must understand and carry out his role at city government. That's just our general duty. We can't come in and not prepare. And it's, it actually falls at several places, but that's the general concept. We're responsible to understand and carry out our duties as a city council representative. Again, that's a knowledge kind of a thing. And respect, we need to show proper professional respect. And I would comment, this would be, I wouldn't go into a judge and tell him or her that I thought that she was not acting appropriately in, in less than those terms. I might disagree with the judge's ruling, which is certainly within my prerogative, my role as an attorney, but I would not be disrespectful. I wouldn't go into court wearing, you know, less than a suit or at least sport coat and a tie and those things, because that's the respect you're supposed to show. So I could, I'm just trying to translate it to something that I, I do on a regular basis. So any question about the general three Rs, and we'll go into the specifics.
You know, I don't have a question, but I guess, you know, I would, I know, Tony, you said you're going to sit on the sidelines for the rest of this, but I, I am interested in where specifically you think this is a violation of, you know, if there's, I know I'm trying to pin you down, but like, I'm genuinely concerned, like, where there's areas of things that are like, yeah, I don't feel good about that. Or I think this infringes upon my free speech or my role. Because there's certainly some things in here where you're like, you know what? I should be able to do this. And that by, by doing this infringes upon what, what I view as my role as a city counselor. So I would normally not say, hey, Tony, re-engage and tear us apart. But, but I am genuinely curious where you have those issues and what you would vote against. And not, not generally, just specifically when we get to those points.
And for the record, I am not disengaged. I'm listening to you all. I just think we should spend this hour and a half talking about budget issues instead of this nonsense. But I will tell you, there's an election coming out. I'm, I may not support two of you or three of you who are running. And I may say terrible things about you in the newspaper and in public and to other people. Those are where some of my concerns lie. So that's just one small example. That doesn't mean I'm disrespectful. I'm speaking, Mr. Mayor. I thought we were.
I was asking a question.
But as far as being, I'm trying to finish. If, as far as like the interrupting and the behavior things, those are different things than what I can or cannot say. I think you're on dangerous, dangerous ground here, and I look forward to car reviewing this. But I can basically say whatever I want about Paula's step because she's a public figure and people could say stuff about me. And there really are no consequences. Are there consequences at this board then that are different than my consequences as a citizen? That I can't criticize a public official? That's where I have a huge issue. And that's why I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
And again, I'm just curious, sorry to interrupt. I thought you were done. But I'm very curious, when we get to those sections, would you please speak up? Because I'm just not clear on the overarching thing of you don't support. Because I'm just not clear on the overarching thing of you don't support it. I want to know specifically where any of us have an issue. And then I have some issues with some of it specific and we'll get to those, but I, and I know you're not checked out, but I want to know when those things come up. So I just, I'm encouraging you, I guess is what I'm trying to say here. I'm not trying to pick a fight, Tony. Okay, go ahead, Charlie. Shelley, sorry, sorry, Shelley, you're up.
So I had in the general rules in that section A, I had just a formatting thing on number three. It should be, you know, a period after respect. But also it says each council member shall respect all other council members and members of the public at all times. I think there you're trying to govern what someone feels or I may not respect everybody, but I'll certainly want to treat them with respect. So I was just going to revise that to say each council member shall treat all other council members and members of the public with respect at all times.
Right, and that's where my problem is.
Wait, hold on.
Like what's respect? If I say something, if I disagree with Ingrid because she's, is that being disrespectful? I don't know. So those are my issues. Thank you.
Shelley, could you give me that again? Because I'm trying to make changes over talking.
So number three under A would read each council member shall treat all other council members and members of the public with respect at all times, rather than saying they shall respect them. Because, yeah.
And I think that was the intent of it, so thank you.
And then under C, are we going on the, okay.
Yeah, sure.
Under C.
Well, is there anybody, maybe let's take it, is anybody thinking in the role of council members? This came out of almost every code of conduct that I read talked about, you know, although we represent wards, we have our duty to the city as a whole. Does anybody have any issue on role? Okay, now Shelley.
And so under C responsibilities, I had a problem with the exigent circumstances, which I had to look up because I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, lawyer term.
When I read it, you know, exigent circumstances, I mean, that's like life or death or some major thing. And I thought, well, what if I'm on vacation? So I have trouble with that term and I don't know what might be a suitable one.
What paragraph?
Number one of C. And that actually appears in a couple of other places. It also appeared under boards and commissions. So I'd like to find other language than exigent circumstances because, you know, we are all public servants, but we're not paid employees and we do our best to make all of the meetings and be prepared, but, you know, things come up and there may be other things that might not be considered exigent circumstances. But so I was, I'd like to come up with a different term pretty much everywhere where that is used would be my comment there.
And I would say, you know, I feel the same way. I think our code specifies that we cannot miss more than three meetings in a row.
Three consecutive meetings, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, you know, and that's kind of crazy. That means you can miss a month and a half of council work in theory. If you're, if you're gone out of the country, if you're just checked out and that is not, I don't think anybody would say that's serving the public. So, you know, I guess I would like to, I agree with you, Shelley, and I don't know what the verbiage is, but council members shall make all attempts to attend. I'm just, I'm spitballing here, so somebody jump in, Charlie, or somebody else can, you know, correct me. But, you know, I would like to be able to take a vacation and miss a meeting.
Right.
And because we're virtual now, we in theory can do meetings from wherever and some of us do. But once we get back in person, you know, this is a document that I hope lives on past us, you know, I think that we should have an expectation of being able to occasionally miss a meeting, but we should stay involved. We should watch the YouTube video or read the minutes to stay consistent and current because those, those issues that we talk about that you might miss might come back up. So is there a better verbiage of just, we should make the best attempt to not miss more than two meetings in a row? And then we always have the code to fall back on. And then I do believe that Dan Richardson, when he was on city council had, he was getting his masters or something, you know, Carl, you're around, but like he needed to be excused for like two or three months for something.
Yeah, he was doing a fellowship. It's actually in the, in the charter.
Oh.
So it's not, there's any flexibility on you guys amending that, but that is three unexcused absences in a row creates a vacancy in the term of office and that's underneath the charter.
Here's my thought, Jonathan, if I could interject.
Sure.
I fully understand what you're saying and it's a lawyer term and I threw it in because I didn't have anything else in my brain. I'm making comments, let Carl and I and/or other people take a look and figure out, I agree with what you're saying, it wasn't my intent. So I made a comment, we need, what I wrote is we need to reword exigent to something that's more flexible. That's my comment in the notes that I'm keeping.
Okay.
So rather than trying to reword things here, let's try to figure out what we need to change and take another shot at it.
And maybe that excused absence that's already in the charter is, is something we go with. Okay. Let's see if I had anything else.
Can I, can I jump in as well and just ask that council members, if they know that they're going to be gone, bring it before the body and just let us know, hey, I'm going to be on vacation or I have family in town and I won't be at the next meeting. I don't know if we need to get to a point where we need to ask for a full excusal from the body, but just, you know, if you know you got something going on, it'd be great to know ahead of time. So if you can work that in there, Charlie, that'd be awesome.
Okay, let me, yeah, let me, I'll make a note here in a second. The next thing I want you to look at is two because the 10% of work sessions, again, I just, it's a number pulled out of thin air. So I don't really know, you know, if that's a good number, if that you, something you want to put in at all. I know the idea was we really want people to be there most of the time. So there's, I don't believe in Carl correcting me if I'm wrong, but work sessions is just the charter thing about three consecutive meetings.
Yes, and it defines, you know, meetings is defined in the charter, so.
You know, the only thing is if you're on three boards and commissions, for example, and they meet, say they all meet monthly or maybe even one doesn't meet, that's only nine meetings. So if I'm gone on a two week vacation, I might miss three of the nine. I might miss like 33% of the boards and commissions in a quarter.
This right now is council work sessions, not board and commissions. That's later.
Oh, sorry.
Right.
So I'm in C too. No, it's fine because I think we need to look at that issue too, so.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that, but I did have a comment on number 14 also, same comment on exigent circumstances, but also it says council members shall attend all meetings of boards and commissions. I would change that shall to are expected to attend because again, with all the meetings that we have, sometimes we may miss boards and commission meetings more often than we miss our council meetings. And, you know, in my part anyway, I make my best to be there and be a good liaison to the board, but the board goes on whether we're there or not. And I think, you know, if we occasionally, I would just lessen the burden on that.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
I, I'm fine with that change, so.
And then I feel that same way about number two is, you know, expected to attend instead of a 10% or a number or some words of encouragement to intend, but the 10% is, is again, pretty confining. And it's like, well, who's tracking that 10%? So something that allows us to say, you know, along the lines of city council, you know, sometimes you just can't be there and.
We'll take out the missing.
Heard about using a 10% number.
You know, I'd like to have something a little bit more than make a best effort because, you know, I have observed on other boards and commissions, especially when you get towards the last couple of years of your term, you're like, oh, I'll just go to the actual regular meeting. And I think, you know, I heard that from boards and commissions, for example, when I got on, so like, oh, we haven't seen our liaison in two years. And, you know, there was council people that would just, if it wasn't, if it wasn't even a meeting sometimes that impacted them, they wouldn't make much of an effort.
I'm sorry, I referred back to two.
Yeah, I know, I am. Yeah, I am too. But whether it be boards and commissions or work sessions, I mean, if you're going to be at the meeting, I view the work sessions that precede the meeting as part of the meeting. And so, yeah, life comes up and, you know, it does happen, but I have seen it where this regularly gets abused. So I think having a better expectation than should make their best effort, I don't think does a whole lot. I don't thought, I mean, I'm not tied to it though. I mean, I'm fine if we want to just put it in there and make their best effort, but.
Is there a way to refer to work sessions are considered part of a council meeting? Or, you know, as, is there, I'm just saying, is that an option that we could discuss and saying going to city council meeting and going to work sessions has the same level of importance?
We could just include work sessions in number one, not make it separate.
Less numbers are better.
I think we can work with the, with the concept that you guys are just trying to get people to stay engaged and attend.
Right.
And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, this is only binding to the effect that we want to bind ourselves. You know, we're going to pass whatever we're going to pass or not. And at the end of the day, we're going to be the ones to enforce and police and encourage each other. You know, this is something that I would love to be able to go or have somebody say to me in a couple of years or a couple of months, hey, Jonathan, you're just not going to the work sessions. You know, they, they are part of the regular meetings and you're kind of, go ahead, Charlie.
Let me give you, it's what I, this is a subwordy I just played with council members, this is in two S and is with some changes. Council members are expected and shall make his or her best efforts to attend all work sessions of council. Regular absences from council work sessions in any calendar quarter should be a violation of the code of conduct. Takes out the 10%, but kind of, I think it's trying to get the sense of what you guys are talking about. Again, I'm not, whether those words are just another thought, maybe we could work on that, but that's just a thought I had to, how to get away from that 10%.
And say that I agree with you because I think if you take that same concept, I think what we might be getting caught up in is that we had a quantifiable measure of 10% and now we're trying to find an alternative to that. But ultimately, what you just said implies an intention, which all the other ones also imply an intention. And I think we're just trying to, to dedicate some intention that we would satisfy this criteria. So I'm comfortable with the way that you just worded it.
The last section I just said?
Yep. Yeah.
All right. Other, other things in section C and responsibilities, I think somebody went to 14. No, I already got 14.
I went to 17. Just as a comment, I really like that. I think it speaks well to the council role on boards and commissions. And then starting with no council member either directly or indirectly, that should be number 18, I think, right?
Yeah, probably right. Something happened in the pageant and the number is here.
Okay. I think that's all I had in that section. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? It's going to respect.
Well, hold on. Are we going to?
Snap with it, Mr. Mayor, let's kick with it.
No, I understand. Are we not going to talk about anything else in responsibilities? Did we, do we skip? I thought we were going to go through like kind of line by line and say, okay, you know, does anyone have a problem?
I was taking a bigger big pieces. Anything else in C and responsibilities?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I do. Number 11, if a member leaves the dais. And it's happened before, but if someone storms off, it happened on the previous council, the council previous to the previous council where people got very upset and passionate about something, they stormed off. And I would just say if somebody storms off, they're done, like they signify that they are done with the meeting. I, I don't want this, like if you're in, you're in, you're out, you're out. And, and I think if you get up and you leave, goodbye, you're done, have a good night. So it's clear to everybody and then it's not just popping back in after you've cooled off. It's like, I'm done with this meeting, I'm going to announce this and I'm going to leave. So that, that would be, I guess, one of my suggestions is that if somebody leaves, they're done for that evening. Done with council, not, not done forever, but done for that meeting.
The city's written, they want to weigh in on that one, but I, I disagree in principle of what you say. Having had in my history somewhat of a anger control issue from time to time, usually if I walk away for a few minutes and I remember what a doofus I am, I can go back and apologize and say, I'm sorry, it was a doofus and stormed off. And, you know, I shouldn't be as an elected representative of, of the city barred for the remaining meeting because I let my emotions get ahead of me. And I think that what I was trying to do in this section, and I appreciate your comment, Jonathan, but I tried to do this session is don't leave if, you know, if you leave, it's disrespectful to the people that are talking at the time, it's disrespectful to the council members. You know, I'm an old guy occasionally, as you look to me often during recesses, I need recesses to deal with personal issues and I don't know a better way to put it, but, you know, it's just, it's, it's, you know, that's different. I need a recess or anyone needs a recess, you know, if you're not able to do it. The only, the only exception would be rather than me getting sick on the, on the dais or in front of everybody on Zoom, I'm trying to leave the meeting, so.
And I think, I think you have that in there and it's not a big deal. I think we're fine, but you have it in there where, you know, if you ask permission or can we adjourn or whatever, like that's one thing. And I guess I'm talking about, you know, Stephen Burgeney did it and everybody's like, what the heck is he, did he just quit council? And I don't think he came back, but I think this, I'm fine. If you have an issue with it, I don't have that much of an issue with it, other than I just, I think people should take responsibilities for their action if they don't want to be a part of a meeting.
And I agree. If it becomes a regular thing, then it becomes, you know, more, more, more important. And I think it says it's a violation of the code of conduct. And if I do it once in a year, and hopefully I never do this, knock on wood, but I mean, if I ever do it once in a year, that's one thing. But if I, every meeting or twice during a meeting, I, I get angry and storm off and it's a different thing. You're not acting, that violates the respect of the other issues that are in the code. So I would read all four quarters of the code together in that respect.
Sure. Let's see, what else? Oh, number 12, council members shall vote on all matters is abstain of vote. Because I believe in our code, it says an abstain is, shall be referred to as an affirmative vote.
I think that's in a different section. That actually may be in the rules procedure. That was some stuff where I was going back and forth. It's in the rules procedure. If you don't vote, it's considered to be a vote for the motion on the table. I know it's in one of these too, but I think it might be the rules procedure is how I think about it. So I just, you give as a code of conduct, you're supposed to vote. You're not supposed to abstain other than Ms. Russo abstained already, once in her career as a city council person. So she's already a violation of this. Now, that was a lot different because she was brand new and that's why I actually wanted to bring it up, Ingrid, is because, you know, she was new in the council, there was something that she hadn't even had a chance to even think about. That's a different issue, but you can't come in and say, I'm not prepared or I don't want to vote because I really don't want to take a position on that. I think the goal is, is you vote in every matter before the council. And if you don't, it's considered to be a vote for the motion. So you can't effectively filibuster. I was trying to look at the old word that city used to use, can't filibuster and prevent a vote we've already taken either, so.
I think that we could add some language in there that just says that, you know, ultimately before these meetings, we should all know if we're not in a position, there's a conflict of interest or something that would dictate a recusal, in which case I think we could add language in there that stipulates just that.
Actually, it's in the code of procedure, yet there's a conflict. It's in our, we have a code of conflict. No, that's fine, but we have a code of conflict and one of our standard agenda items is if you have any conflicting matters on the, on the council, if you do, the procedure, Ingrid, is, is you leave the room. In this case, I think I had it once, it's been on Zoom and I walked out down the hallway and kind of listened. So I knew when you guys were ready for me to come back, but I, I was not visible to anybody in the public or other members of council. And that's the purpose when you have a conflict. So you announce it before the item. That's, that's different. That's different.
Yeah.
Um, I have an issue, not an issue, but just a thought on number 14. I honestly, I don't, I don't like the fact that the mayor, I mean, I like the power, but I don't think that the mayor should necessarily appoint people to boards or commissions that they have no interest or desire to be on. I think that's just setting people up for a lack of participation and a disengagement from whatever board or commission they're on. I, I kind of think if there's a board or commission that you want to be on, typically we, you know, boards and commissions are part of the job. That's the way I view it and we usually, we have more volunteers than we do boards and commissions, even though I think we have 13 boards or commissions and a host of like other groups like COGS and, and all that stuff. I guess I would say if we don't have somebody on council that has the inclination or the the inclination or the time to staff as a, not staff, but to serve as liaison for a, say, a Club 20 or Northwest COGS or a Rude Eye Water or or whatever. Or the Arts Commission. You know, I don't want to force him. I don't want to assign somebody to something that they don't want to be a part of. That's just my theory and or my opinion. And if they if that border commission does not have anybody that is a liaison, then it's just, it meets on its own with hopefully some staff person from the city and that's how that board runs until somebody either becomes interested or a new counselor gets on that is interested. But I just don't have the it, I I don't want to take initiative to appoint people to boards that there is no interest on. So I I think that whole section.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your long comment on that. Some sarcasm in that, but if you read the second last slide, shall advise mayor who may appoint, doesn't say shall appoint, may appoint, which allows you that flexibility.
Well, but that assumes, so a council member shall attend all meetings of boards and commissions, which he or she is assigned as council liaison. Absent, it's.
We're going to get rid of exigent.
Yeah. And again, I I want to get rid of assigned. So I guess if we take out the word assigned, I feel better about it.
Appointed. How about appointed?
Sure.
No, I now I understand. Okay. All right, appointed.
Um, and I would also say council liaison seeks his or her attendance. If if you have alternate language in there, most of our boards and commissions don't have an alternate. If available, maybe put if available.
Um, yeah, or if any.
Jonathan, before we get too far away from shall not necessarily, like I said, I think there was a, it was a point. A council member to the boards, I will say that I disagree with what you said in that if there's not interest, we shouldn't necessarily have a council appointed as a liaison. Because I think ultimately, that would be like saying, you know, I'm not interested in this, in reviewing this application because it just doesn't generate much enthusiasm from me. I think that we have a responsibility to each one of these boards and commissions to have someone who is present. And I think it contradicts the previous appointment where we we are now adding some language in this code of conduct that says that we will make an attempt to be there regularly to the meetings.
I agree with Ingrid. I think it's important we have our presence there and that it that's a respect for those groups. There's a lot of work people put in these and.
And I agree with both of you. Nothing, this section says what Jonathan says. It just, it doesn't require him to appoint somebody, but hopefully among the seven of us, we're always able to make sure we have all these covered. And there are some that are more exciting than others and we all know that. And and I appreciate those who go to all these meetings that sometimes aren't as in, you know, always as exciting during the meeting as 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 others. But I I agree that we need to, we need to do, I don't think that's here in the code. I'm not sure it belongs in the code of conduct. If you are assigned, the purpose of this section, if you are assigned or agree to do a be the liaison, you need to go to the meetings. The idea is you don't just simply not vote because the the boards and commissions, you know, they they volunteer, like we do a lot of time. And if we're, if we're not there to show an interest, that gets to your comment to Ingrid, that we have somebody at each one. We're not doing our job as council members. If you don't want to do your job, you should not be on the council. So I agree with you.
But but I would add, there are some periphery groups. I mean, when I'm thinking boards and commissions, I'm thinking the solid, you know, the people that we asked to volunteer to be on arts and culture or housing or transportation or any of those, that's really important to have our presence. When you're looking at something like CML or Club 20 and and that's a little bit more, it's harder sometimes to be a part of some of that, especially when you had to travel or that was part of that. So there is that component as well that you need to weigh, you know, is when those were in person and I was doing AGNC, sometimes I just couldn't drive to Craig to hit a morning meeting because I had other things that I had to do that day. Now that there's Zoom, it's a little easier, but that's something to keep in mind.
No, I agree. I agree.
Okay. And the only thing else I would say before we move on is like council member, number 17. And I don't know if we need to put it in there, but sometimes our voice is really powerful in a room and can dominate the conversation. I've seen it happen. I've probably done it. I don't know if it's here we want to mention, like, we are here to observe and to relay and convey information, not to guide discussion. Shelley knows what I'm talking about.
Yes. And I totally agree on that. I don't know if we need to add language to that. I did like that second, is it second or third sentence, council may support or not support, but the council member must encourage the board to make their independent recommendation, which I think is really important because we're not there to project councils or our individual wishes onto the board. We should listen to the board and you know, as a liaison, we might want to, I think it's okay to to convey maybe what we think might be councils leaning on a certain issue, but I think it's always important to encourage that board to make their best recommendation based on their expertise and everything.
And I agree, Shelley, because as you know, with your transportation, for instance, you and I serve on the office of what does council think of this? And and Jonathan, I know you've run into that as well, some of the boards you're on, I'm not as familiar with some of the other boards, but you know, all I say in those cases as well, this, this is kind of what was said at a previous meeting. I don't know if that that determines anything, but the the idea of this is, it really has come up in both Fab and Transportation, which I'm a liaison to, and that is, you guys need to make a recommendation. That's what we're asking you to do. Even if you disagree with what you think I think, you should make a recommendation. That's the important thing. It's hard in these meetings to sit there and not say anything, you know, I I realize that. And I really try to get much better about that because I I started out being much, I was on, I was on both these as a member before I became a liaison, so it's hard now.
But I think that's right, Charlie, because we don't want the boards to just say what they think council wants to hear. That kind of defeats the whole purpose.
I agree. I agree. So I made a comment here. Let me think about some wording. I understand what you guys are saying. Okay.
Um, and and before we go under respect, I just want to see, just kind of circle back real quick and just get a thumbs up. Is there anything in those 17 items under responsibilities that anybody's like, yeah, that's a deal breaker. I I can't abide by that.
Actually, it's 18 now because I missed.
Oh, okay. Well, so far from what we've discussed or gone over, is there anything that anybody's like, yeah, that's that's a deal breaker? Okay. Just want to check in there, buddy. Okay.
D, respect. And these were a combination of not only codes of conduct, but I can't remember what other other cities would call these. Shelley, I think you sent me some stuff and Rick, I know it sent me some stuff here. This concept of being respectful to people. Anyway, so.
Civil discourse, is that what it's called?
Civil discourse, yes.
I think this is where Ingrid, number four in here is where, yeah, we've got argumentative and then argument at the end of that one.
Oh, yeah.
Just to type both of them.
Yeah, the second argument should be out. Thanks. Anything else? Let's go to decorum.
Uh, yeah, I got it. Sorry. I have a couple of things.
Sorry, sorry, Jonathan.
No, it's okay. I I just didn't want to jump. Number five. And I think I'd I would, if there's other sections, I would, I would like this language be inserted in, staff shall not belittle, degrade or otherwise disparage to the council members or staff to members to the public and or each other, whether those comments are made in a meeting or outside the meeting. I I I think we also have people like presenters, contractors, developers who are presenting items, thoughts, whatever. And so I I I I think we should apply that same standard to whomever is before us on the dais, whether it's staff, each other, or anything else. So maybe that's covered.
I think it's covered in public. Because everybody's a public. There's a section on staff later on, so I don't know that covers this. This is probably, this might get to what Tony's comment was, though. Does this mean in an election, maybe Carl, you could weigh in a little bit here. In an election, if I don't want wanting you to be elected, reelected, can I go out and act like campaigning? I should be able to do that. Or I should be able to go out and act like campaigning for you if I chose to do that. So I don't want, I don't think my intent was to that kind of a conversation. It's a good point, Tony, because I hadn't thought about that as in this section, but this is probably where that would come up. Carl, I'd not put you on the spot, but.
You're muted. You're muted, Carl. Sorry. Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, I I think the easy thing to do is just kind of define this as inside of the meetings, right? And and I think in that it is a reasonable time, place and manner sort of restriction on yourself as to how you're, how you're interacting with each other and talking to each other and talking to the public. Certainly, there are times um, you know, that you're bound by state law, for instance, like you, you can't go out and use city resources to campaign on behalf for against, say, a ballot major or a table major that you put on the the ballot and and say you're doing that on behalf of the city council. You can obviously do that on your own behalf. So I think we just need to define where you're talking about this kind of stuff. And it's really inside the confines of of your role in the meetings is really where this comes up primarily.
Yeah. So I put a comment in there so we could work on that. But that's a great point because I, when I drafted this, it wasn't intended to be those those kind of comments. It was you, you know, the idea in my mind, when I drafted this outside the meeting is I can't go out and bespurged the mayor and talk about, you know, all the bad things that I know about him that the public may not otherwise know, just because I'm upset with him by the way he voted on an issue that I was proposing in a council meeting. That that's the concept behind it. Sorry, picking on you.
And that's actually something you you can't do, right?
But yes, you can, Carl.
No, no, no. I said what you can't do with the rules of decorum. Let me.
I can say whatever I want about the mayor.
Um, yeah, I mean, you you have a couple of, you know, rails that apply to you that don't apply to everybody else that you and I and Charlie have regarding conduct, which is is actually an interesting one because I, I mean, it's one of the reasons why, like for Charlie and I and Tony, we have a whole set, another set of rules that apply to us has been found to be binding because it relates to our professional licensure and how we behave. And that does in fact cross over to where we can't, you know, walk around lying. But you as elected officials are subject to a lot more, you know, people can say what generally whatever they want. They can't, they can't go over the edge and and be slanderous. But they can certainly push right up to the edge of that. And there's a lot of caselot there on that, on interactions between council members. And I think that's what I think, you know, councillor Hershey wants to make sure that he has the freedom to do that. In, you know, and there again, that's why I really think that when you're talking about these decorum, it is inside the body when you're acting in your, in your capacity in council chambers. I think that's a completely reasonable expectation. But frankly, Charlie, if you want to walk outside of the meeting and go down to the bar and sit at the bar and have a drink and talk about, you know, your thoughts on on the mayor's competency, that's fully within your purview to do. Unless that came up in the context of an executive session, which is a whole different set of issues.
It's a different issue.
Yeah, Steve Davis isn't here. Can we use Steve Davis as the example from this point on?
So I'm sorry, the the example should have been Steve Davis goes down to the bar.
That's right. They all have to talk crap about me.
Talk about the incompetency of the mayor he can. You see than that example.
Thank you, Carl. Appreciate that. So I made a comment. We'll we'll work on that because I agree. That's not the intent, so. Seven is something that is showing up in more and more. I just want to point it out in case somebody has a separate comment. We have to be very careful what we do in social media. There was, this is not only is it, is it a conduct issue, but it's also a potential liability issue. And I think it would be in our meeting with SIRS, so after I got a council, they came and met with us about risk and things. This is something they talked about. It's be real careful what you're doing because you could implicate the city and make the city financially liable if you say things. And I see Carl stepping up to the plate.
Yeah, I was, I mean, what I was going to say is that, you know, we actually drafted a social media policy that and in this example, I'm actually using the mayor in his real capacity, kicked down the road far enough because he he didn't want to have a discussion about the use of social media. So I I do think and, you know, on us, on the staff side, we have a a social media policy that applies to you as an employee of the city. And certainly the purpose of a social media policy for the council, from my perspective, is to define when you're paying your own legal bills. I'm not going to tell you know, Ingrid, what she can post on her personal page. I'm just telling her when I am not going to pay her legal bills when she gets sued or she's writing a check for a judgment. That's the only purpose it has for me.
So Ingrid, you're learning equal opportunity picking on people.
This is the second time Carl's told me that, and it makes me a little concerned that he might.
And I actually, I used Ingrid in this example because she confided to me that she uses social media almost as much as I do. Which is.
Totally.
Okay, all right.
The the only thing I would have that I do have on my Facebook page that, you know, I I don't want to, it says here, you can't block people and or you cannot, the council member may not block any person's access to that social media account. And and I I'm not supportive of that. If somebody's abusive, profane, off topic, ad hominem tax, then then I will set up barriers to that. And then I think that has been shown that that is appropriate.
Yeah. And and really what I would do here is instead of trying to define it in here is, is I would just use something as simple as you know, city council members will implement best practices with regard to their use of social media. And the reason I say that is that, one, it's an evolving thing that we are already having this discussion two years behind where it's at and how people are using it. And so I think it's always going to be an ongoing education thing, and I don't think that static guidelines are necessarily the best approach when we're dealing with an evolving area of of law. And I don't want anybody to feel like they are protected because they did what's in this policy. And then turns out that's the wrong thing to do because there was another case or another whatever two weeks ago. You know what I'm saying? It's just, it's a tough area to operate in and try to lay down that this is how it's going to work.
And that's exactly why I didn't want to deal with this a year ago, Carl, when you brought it to our catch. For that reason is special.
Yeah, I I think it was more because we were telling you to stop doing a couple of things.
Maybe.
That may have been, maybe you just didn't articulate it this way then.
Possibly, possibly. You know, the the last thing I'll say is there's nothing in here. It's just about social media. It does comment on that. So maybe this is another topic. But what about regular media, traditional media, where you know, do we, again, we have free speech and I I I know we're kind of in a gray room of free speech, but you know, I didn't, I did not find it so productive I don't know, three, four months ago, when there is a vote by this council to do something, we had a councillor write an op ed and we had another councillor write a rebuttal to that op ed. And I don't, I don't know if we want to weigh in on that, but it 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 wasn't a good look. It wasn't productive and it made us look, and this is a code of conduct. This is not a binding document that supersedes anybody's rights. It's it's an aspirational document that you know, every time that, you know, you lose a four or three vote, you know, does Steve Davis want to go out and write a scathing op ed? And is that something that we want to maybe weigh in and say that is not desirable?
I I think you can certainly weigh in and say that best practices is not to do that. You certainly can't keep somebody from doing that. And honestly, I would imagine in the next six months, several of you will do that on a repeated basis. Because we have an election coming up and this council likes to communicate via the press with each other. I'm I'm going to be really blunt there, right? And so I think each one of you has to make a choice as to whether that's what you want to do and how you want to interact with the press. I know that you know, oftentimes that's a in my career, I've run into that, that people use it as a threat of that I'm, I'm, hey, you know, I don't, I don't like what you said in a public meeting. I'm going to go to the press or I don't like what you said privately. Not a lot you can do about that. Right? And and there again, is it a best practices? No, is it good for the for the the working relationship with the council? No. Can you dictate how that behavior goes? No.
No, I don't think anything, I guess my point is nothing in here is, you know, we're not dictating. We don't have the power of law. It's just a here's how we all would like to respond and interact with each other. I mean, I I don't think it should use shall, but
Yeah, no.
You know, if we don't even want to put that. You know, if we don't even want to put that in there, because that's, that's too much of an infringement to where we'd like to be aspirational, to be not looking like a dysfunctional argumentative group in the paper, then, then that's fine. But I would like to have something in here that says, we should not aspire to do that.
Yeah, and I think that's, if you want to do it as aspirational.
That's exactly, I'm sorry, Shelley, or Paula, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Paula Steph can write whatever she wants in the newspaper and say whatever she wants about me, I gave her permission. And I can respond to her, I don't understand. I thought that was actually Mr. Mayor, not an unhealthy argument. And I know the councilman who is forgotten but not gone clearly, didn't like it for some reason, and has some sort of aspiration that we should all be polite. Well, this is politics, it's not kindergarten where we're all get put in the corner if you say something nasty to somebody. It's a legitimate disagreement, and I think that should be aired in the public. That's what the people want. And if they don't want it, guess what? When Paula and I are up for reelection in 2023, then they can vote us out. That's the solution. Thank you.
The, well, one thing I was going to say is, um, there are going to be cases and situations, and we can go back to the street tax. You know, where you have a public, you have a viewpoint, and you want to make sure that your viewpoint as a city council person or as a city, yeah, that your viewpoint is a certain way, and, and you want the public to understand where you're coming from. Um. Not trying to, you know, from my own perspective, it's not a case of, you know, I don't like what Jonathan did, or I don't like what Charlie did, but it's more like, I want clarity on, you know, where, where I'm coming from, because people are going to reelect you, hopefully. Um, or, you know, you are in the public eye, and you are having to explain yourself to your ward or fellow citizens. And, and I'm not saying in every case that you're going to go out there and do that, you know, in that particular situation that you brought up, Jonathan. The newspaper reported my vote wrong, I needed to be clear on where I stood on that. So, you know, it's, it's just difficult to say black and white, you know? There are situations, and, and I don't think anybody should take advantage of using it as a, as a bullhorn. But you, clarity is okay for people to understand where you're coming from, you know, especially if you're making decisions.
Let me, let me interject, I'm going to kind of use my assigned chairmanship of this particular section and get us move on. I think I, I have that, I have that comment, and I think it's in a private section. I just added something that, um, again, you just can't represent your view as, as the view of city council or the city. It has to be your personal view, so I think that's about all the line we can draw on that.
That's fine, that's fine. I would just, I guess I would say if you want to print a correction to the paper, you do it as a letter to the editor, not an op ed, which has a different weight, but we don't need to put it in there, I guess I would just ask that for the rest of councillors. If you need a simple correction to do it as a simple letter to the editor, and not a full-blown op ed about the larger topic. But we don't need to belabor that anymore, decorum.
Okay, so I'm going to move on, paragraph eight under this section, and just to catch it, remember to use the city email that's put in here. Not as much of a code of conduct, but to protect us all against Cora requests. It's, it's a whole lot better to do, and I get emails, unfortunately, more often than not, to my personal email, because my personal email is, um, uh, fairly well-known from various things that I've been on. And I really try to respond to people, say, do this to my city email, and I copy myself on that response, which also contains the email given to me, so that's in the city records, uh, which is real important to Carl and staff when they got to deal with Cora, uh, requests. So just please keep that in mind in a general sense. Okay, decorum. Um, three A, any, any questions, comments, changes?
Yep, I had a couple.
Go ahead.
Am I up? Okay. Decorum under A, I would strike, uh, and in the general public. Again, rules of decorum observed during city council meetings. Again, I think Carl already spoke to that, that should probably just be, again, not having decorum really govern what I do in my personal life.
Okay.
Um, and then number six. Shall not make any promises. Unless, I was just going to add on to the end of that, should not make any promises on behalf of the city, city staffer, council, unless specifically authorized by council. Because there are situations where you're sent to represent. And, and you might.
Oh, good, good comment. Okay. Any others?
That's all I have in A.
Let's stick with one at a time. Anybody else have anything else in A?
Well, I mean, Tony, this is some of that, I mean, you, it is, as long as it's in the scope of the meeting. Does that kind of address some of your concerns about being able to go out and openly campaign? If you want?
In the scope of the meeting, yeah.
Okay, so.
What if at the, what if on the, from the DA's, I were to say, guess what, the election's next week, you should all support, uh, Joe Biden for president? That might be okay, but then if I say from the DA's, you should all vote for, you know, you shouldn't vote for these three people, because they're bad, and if you get a majority, and we're going to do this, I mean, that's where you run into trouble.
Yeah, and, and I guess I would just say that, again, this is an aspirational document. I don't think you would even say we should aspire to make wide-ranging, belligerent, uh, impertinent and slanderous comments from the DA's. I think we all probably agree, we would like to act in a better way, at least on the DA's. So i- if we take out in the general public, you can be as slanderous as you want to me in the public, Tony, and you have. And it's typical, and it's typical.
Paul brought up a good point about, under the rules of professional conduct as an attorney. I was actually concerned during that debacle last spring, that I was on the, that there could have been issues, and I was advised, you know, so I have a whole nother thing that I have to worry about. So if I say bad things to Charlie during a meeting, would he file a complaint with, I don't think he would, but with the ARC, which is Attorney Regulation Council, you know, so I'm very aware of what you're talking about, Jonathan. But I'm just, you know, out in public, outside the courtroom, I think, outside the DA's, outside city council, outside Zoom, this meeting, I think you don't want to put restrictions on what people say, whatever it is. And if they want to say something outrageous and off the wall, then that's their funeral, I guess.
Let me, let me redirect again into paragraph seven. I think that's a critical paragraph, because that deals with conduct, which is, for lack of a better term, unbecoming an officer, I think is too often heard in movies. But I think the concept is, is you can't go out and, and, um, in engaging habits of becoming, um, of, of a public official. I think we got to be respectful of the fact that we took an oath of office, uh, we represent the city council. And if I went out and he got drunk and got in a bar fight at Doc Holliday's, I think that would be a violation of this section, and should be. So I just want everybody to be, just thought about comments on that particular provision.
So if Steve gets into a bar fight, I think, I don't know, he doesn't represent, Charlie, Steve Davis doesn't represent this council. He's a member of this council, he represents the people of the city of Glenwood Springs. And if they don't like his behavior, there's a route to get rid of him.
I, I agree, Tony, but I do think that we should, again, as aspirational goals, say, we're, we're at different standards of conduct. I mean, I, I practically hit the bar seat a lot when I was younger. And then I was municipal judge for about six months before I became city attorney. And suddenly I had to realize that I couldn't go out and sit in the bars, because I may see those people, you know, in my courtroom. And then when I became city attorney, I had to be careful, because I represented the city, and I couldn't, you know, be engaged, not, not going to the bar and have a drink or two, but being there till two in the morning, or, or, you know, and, and falling down drunk as I walked out of the bar. I just don't think, that's the kind of stuff, I think we have to, as an aspirational goal, we have to say, we agree it's not appropriate as members of city council. Um, and I think it just had an incident with, I can't remember what town it was in, but one of the municipal officials showed up at the, at a meeting, and he was intoxicated. And, um, you know, that's in a different section, but it just thinks the same thing, I don't know. And again, I brought it up, because I don't know if you wanted it or not wanted it, and that's why I wrote, that's why I picked up this section from somewhere else, I'm sure, and put it in.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just fine with whatever, but, you know, at the same time, like, let's just be aspirational about how, in a vacuum, not about a specific person, not about councillor Davis, who we all want a bad mouth as soon as this meeting goes on, right? But like, just take everything out of a vacuum and say, should we in general perform like this? Yes. Do we have the ability of free speech to say whatever we want, whenever we want? Yeah, absolutely. Are the only people that can cost us this job essentially is a crime or the public, uh, going to vote? Yes, but if we can't at least set the bar a little bit as a guiding document, then we should just stop this meeting right now. Scrap everything and say, you know, we shouldn't even try. Go ahead, Ingrid, sorry, I think I jumped in front.
That's okay. I, I just, you know, it, it's my understanding that the impetus of this code of conduct is, is certainly not just in the last year, but that there was an evolution in probably, like Charlie said, its current in other municipalities as well. So the goal being is that if we have a little structure for why we're up there, as a reminder to be respectful, um, to carry ourselves as elected officials, so that the ultimate goal being that we're, we're, we're truly serving the people of Glenwood. Um, regardless of our ward, regardless of our personal opinions, even at time of each other. The ultimate goal is the items that, that really pertain to the people that we're supposed to be representing. Um, and I think that, you know, we've definitely touched on how we're going to conduct business and what we're allowed to do outside of. But if we can, you know, come to this aspirational, I like the, the terminology, and just say, these are goals that we're all going to work together and be respectful and kind, as much as possible. In an aspirational status. So, you know, it, you know, it's obviously me saying, you know, this is what I got from you guys even starting this process and throwing a draft in front of me on my first meeting.
Welcome to the council.
Thanks.
I'm going to skip paragraph B, I'm going to have done, and I think it's controversial, so I, I want to, we are going to come back to it, but I want to go to council interaction with staff, it's five twenty, and, um, I know we all want to take a break, so we're not going to probably get through this entire thing, but let's try and get through the things that I think may be controversial, but not as much. So let's talk about council interaction with staff, and I bookmarked B to come back, because it talks about removing people and finding council members and stuff, that's going to be, we needed that discussion, but not right now.
Sure.
Probably, we'll get bogged down in that, we won't get to the, the rest of this, which I think is important. So we have direction of where we need to take this next. Okay, with that, article four, council interaction with staff, council members shall, and then comments on that, I don't know if I need to. And, and Deborah, I, I don't want to put you in the spot, if you don't want to say anything, tell me you're not going to say anything, but is this something you think is helpful in, in, in Carl's, and, and I'm not trying to, and I guess I'm putting you on the spot, but tell me you're not going to say anything. I want to make sure that what we're trying to do is give you direction and not interfere in your role as our representative staff, um, and how we interact with staff. This gets to Paul's comments earlier, it wasn't my intent to say you can't ever go and talk to staff or stuff like that. It's, these are the directions we give and how we can deal with that. And this actually is found in lots of the codes of conduct.
Um, you, you know, I, I would actually, um, uh, I'm trying to find the section. Um, your, your charter actually tells you how you can interact with staff, and so it's really not something that's open to, like, we can't modify it. Uh, it's very similar to what you have, um, uh, in there, Charlie, and I'm trying to find the section.
Might be my summary that I put it, again, I had to look at it so recently, I probably should.
Yeah, so anyway, uh, but basically it's that, that, you know, all direction is, is through the city manager, other than for purposes of inquiry. So you can ask questions, but you can't say, I don't know, um, you know, go, go move the, you know, the, the car that's on the boat ramp.
Where Mr. Davis can't say, fix the street in front of my house.
This is part here, um, three point ten, I think.
Yeah, oh, there we go, thank you.
Okay.
Um, except for purposes of inquiry, the council and its members shall deal with the administrative functions of the city solely through the city manager. And neither the council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any of the subordinates of the city manager. And, um, because, uh, you, you know, Charlie's an attorney, he knows that the way he would do that is, is to essentially do a cross-examination of, um, isn't it true, Mr. Boyd, that you are going to, um, you know, put fifty thousand dollars in whatever account? And so that is asked in the form of a question, right? So this is not one of those things where we get a, we get a lawyer at. Um, it's clear what the intent is. If you need information about the budget, go ask whoever a question. Um, obviously, best practices and the request that is always made by every manager I've ever worked with, is that they be informed when you're going to do this, and, you know, the charter section doesn't prohibit that. Um, but that you don't go out and start, you know, going, hey, Deborah, um, or hey Jen, rather, I think that what we need to be doing for economic development are the following three things, and I need you to go out and get started on that. Like, that's not okay. Right? Like, we all know what the rule should is and should be, don't game the rule. Right?
So, it, it, I agree, Carl, and I, I think that when I drafted this, I had read that section, and maybe my summary, I hope it's my summary, would have picked up on that. But what I've tried to do within this section, again, taking from other codes, is how we to not just talk about conduct between ourselves, but how we treat our city staff, so not argumentative, we treat as professionals. Three is in the contact, and maybe we got to play with that, because, you know, I want to, my goal was to define what the charter meant in a little more detail, not to interfere with it, uh, disruptions of staff, criticism of staff, and this publicly criticized individual city employee may be an issue with, again, what Tony was talking about earlier. Oh, um, I don't, I don't know whether that's a, that's a public free speech issue. Anyway.
Shelley, did you have a question? Your hand's up. I don't know if I, you asked it, I didn't lower your hand yet.
I just had a, a few comments on this section, just kind of formatting typos. I can also just send those on to Charlie and Carl, if you'd like, or, because we're at five twenty-six, what do you want me to do?
Why don't you send them, if there's just wording changes, not substantive, send them to me, I'll do original, I'm going to do a run at this. You know, send it out then to Carl to take a look and start looking in, depending where we, how we end up, what we want to do with this tonight, or and whether we finish this, we may need to come back and continue this conversation with code of conduct. But I, I'll take another run at the draft to make sure you guys all get that. And I appreciate editorial comments.
And I guess I would also say is any requests that are lined out in, in the code or the charter that we can make of, of staff members that, um, were conscientious of their private time, their private life, that I'm not calling Terry Parch on a Saturday afternoon and asking her detailed questions for inquiry, and like, pep grass analysis, or something super technical that takes three or four hours of per time to respond to my question, that, that's not, it's not fair to staff.
So let me, if I can, Paula, let me know, and paragraph three, is that where you were concerned, where it talks about questions of city staff?
Yeah, it was just, you know, making sure that, um, we're not making, putting a burden on having to redirect everything through Carl and Deborah. And when they don't really need to be the third person in a conversation, they could be copied or, um, informed, but just trying to make it simple. The same thing with correspondence and seven. You know, to have everything, at least in, in my role in this, in this, as a city council in the past year and a half, I have people contact me all the time, and if I don't know an answer, I just redirect it to Deborah and go, what do I do here? And she says, we'll take care of it, which is great. Um, but there's always going to be that correspondence to some degree that we have with people that we're connected with. So I just want to be really careful on what does that mean when you're talking about correspondence? And, and how tight is the rein there?
Okay, thank you. Good comments, Paula. I highlighted now, because I wouldn't, you sent me an email, I wasn't quite sure where it was, and I've highlighted that, those sections. Anybody have any other comments on, on this? And, um, maybe Deborah, if you have thoughts, you can give it to Carl, and as he does drafts. Again, the, the goal of this is to not increase your burden, but the goal is to not undermine you to city staff, which I think is inappropriate for us to do, or, as the charter says, will undermine you to you directly, but not to your staff.
Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, boards and commissions. Um, do we want this, this is a fundamental question, do we want, I think it's why I have highlighted, um, do we want this to apply to our boards and commissions, this code of conduct, or do we not? And I really was torn whether I put it in or not, so, so I highlighted this particular part five.
Is there other places within the city charter that kind of gives them parameters of what's expected? Is there other places within the city charter that kind of gives them parameters of what's expected of them?
Not really. Um, they're all creatures that you create. I mean, there are some that are identified, um, in the charter and the code. And, but how they behave is really a creature of, of your rules and regulations. Um, for instance, um, we just had this discussion that the Open Meetings Act doesn't technically apply to them. In any form, because, um, statutorily, it only applies to, uh, elected and appointed bodies that are identified in the statute. Um, the city code, however, makes the rules of the Open Meeting Act apply to them because that's, that's how it gets to them. And so it, it really is up to you guys to decide what that looks like.
I would just say from a practical perspective, Charlie, just having, you know, like forty words in a whole subsection, I think there's. A lot, we talk about boards and commissions throughout the document we've covered so far. So I would suggest that we either take those. References and put them under the boards and commission headline or take like the one thing that hasn't been mentioned here. Which I think is members of boards and commissions comply with this code of conduct. Um, and assign it somewhere else. It just, it's not a significant enough section unless you want to bring everything down that we haven't talked, because we have talked about it quite a bit.
No, I, I'm okay if, if, you know, moving that around. The one thing that's in here, I just remembered that, that I wanted to make sure we also talked about. If you want to apply or if we don't, if we want to include it, is, is board commission members missing meetings? And I put more than one meeting in the calendar quarter. Most of these boards and commissions, for the most part, meet monthly. So they're talking about missing one of every three meetings. And again, this came out of some discussion, like Jonathan, you and I had had. Um, I think is where, so I put something in here for discussion purposes, but not trying to suggest that's what we want to do. Or what even what I've suggested we do, just to open up for discussion. So. Do we want even to have anything with about their board and. Members of board that we appointed boards and commissions attending meetings?
I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. I mean, these people, we, we don't get paid much, but we do get a stipend from the taxpayers. And, and these are completely voluntary. And if somebody wants to miss a couple of meetings because it's summer and they're on the road. I, I, I'm okay with it. I think if it gets to be something that is a problem, the liaison will. Bring it to us as a body because we are not the voting public. We, we are the voting. Members to assign people and we can, we can put them on, we can take them out. And if it's a problem, I think we just ask them to resign. And if not, we take formal action to remove them from the board. So I don't, I don't think it needs to be said. I think it's just an expectation.
Carl, do we have authority to remove people from boards and commissions? Okay, I, I, this is probably in my summary, I just can't remember. And I had that shell at ten, so. I said same language and one, if we leave it, I'll change the language, the same thing we had for, you know, that expectation kind of thought, concept we talked about. So do, so the fundamental question, do we want the code of conduct to apply to boards and commissions or not? And then such the structure stuff that Jonathan talked about, uh, we can work on that.
Ingrid, what are, what are your thoughts? I haven't, I mean, you've been on a board and commission for the last five years. I mean, whatever.
Um, you know, I, I think that when it comes to boards and commissions, I. I love the idea that so many people are willing to dedicate time and energy and like you just said, um, with no compensation. Other than just being a voice in our community, which we appreciate. Um, ultimately, I do see some stagnation in the fact that a lot of people end up staying on these boards and commissions for a significant amount of time. Um, but I do think you have clarified that we do have the, the power to appoint. And also remove the appointment when, when it comes to these people who we do appreciate. I think that if someone is not appreciating this opportunity and they're not showing up regularly, then it's, it's. It's our responsibility to remove them. Um, the challenge though is that. We often don't have enough people on these boards, so then we have deficiencies. So we'll end up with not enough people to really give us an, a fair. Um, assessment, say, transportation or planning and zoning. Um, so I want to make sure that we don't. We don't make our rules so strict that we end up, um, losing people when we, we do appreciate them being on there. So.
Thank you.
I'm super ambiguous question. I, I don't think we should have a lot of strict, like stipulations. I think that we're, we're lucky that people want to, to show up.
And Ingrid, we've had a discussion about how long people serve on boards and commissions, which I don't want to delve into here. Cause it, it's a significant discussion that we've had and I think we're, we're still talking about that issue and what our charter code says and. Says as they can, but it's exceptional and whether we should have that language stay or not. So I don't want to get into that today, but. That, that is something we've been talking about for the last couple of meetings.
Um, and what, what is the status on that? Is there, is, is there an opportunity for us to do a workshop on some structure just specifically around boards and commissions? Where we could talk about continuing ed for people, we can talk about appointments, we can talk just, just a little bit more structure so that maybe we don't. Address it here, but we do, we do have a dialogue around it.
Yeah, I think, I think a work session about how do we invigorate and, um, reinvigorate or, or continue. I mean, I know, Ingrid, you've talked about a training that the city sent you on as far, in your role of planning and zoning, which you found very valuable. I think. Being intentional about that is going to create a cool environment. So. I would love to have me, maybe not the next work session, maybe not even this year, but, but shortly, I think it would be great to be able to engage our. Boards and commissions in that way. So I'd be, um, Deborah, very supportive of a, an hour work session where we talk about how we might want to accomplish that. I know you've talked, Deborah, about like a citizens academy, or maybe that was Jen, and maybe that was at a different time.
I would be happy to put this on a future agenda. Yes, but I think citizens, as soon as we're done with COVID, the police chief wants to do a citizens academy. In Spanish and in English and. I think there are ways we could do a better job engaging. So, absolutely.
I'm gonna add to that. This has been, this last little chapter of, um, our political arena. Has been tumultuous at times, but it's also engaged an audience that we historically haven't with a demographic that didn't always stand up to want to be involved. Um, and I think if we make sure that people know about this and we're, uh, we're receptive to, you know, new. New appointments and different people and making sure they know about the opportunities, I think we could have a really diverse voice. On some of these boards and commissions, which I would really appreciate.
Right. Shelley, you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. I was just gonna chime in that. I'm okay with having it in there that the boards and commissions follow the code of conduct because I think it. A, it raises a little bit the level of expectation that you are expected to conduct yourself as a public servant. Especially when you're in the meetings and interacting with staff or interacting with other board members. It also gives council a little more of an, an out in case we do have a problem. Member on a board or commission, which doesn't happen very often, but in case we do, that, that we can. Um, point to that if we need to for removal.
That everybody kind of feels the same way, but I have just a general statement in there and I'll do some more to you on this. Okay.
Well, guys, we're, we're past time. I think, uh. You know, we probably have enough for maybe one more, um, work session to get this buttoned up, um, but I want to make sure.
In two minutes, can I just quickly look at executive sessions? I would appreciate feedback on this section. Um, just as section six. And Carl, if you have a good way in and maybe give us your thoughts on what I put in here. I tried to take. The, the issues that maybe happened this, this spring and make sure that we all know what the rules are, so it's real clear. Um, what should happen. And, and again, this is something, you know, that I work with all the time and confidentiality. And we work with Carl on confidentiality. It's important. So I, I don't know. I, I don't want, this is a longer discussion. I, I agree. I think we need to have this discussion. Carl?
Yeah, um, I think that it's a longer discussion than for just right now. And so why don't I, I think the sections that I really need to probably most weigh in on. Are, we haven't actually gotten to yet, which are how do we deal with privileged information? Um, and, and I view this as a positive in terms of providing guidance that somebody can go to and look at. Not as a, um, you know, trying to, you know, say you can do X and you can do Y and, and we're gonna punish you if you don't. And then I, I think if it's okay with council, I'm gonna go ahead and take a look at the enforcement section before we get to it. Um, it's gonna take a little bit of time, but I think that there is, um. There's frankly not a lot you can do there. Um, but I will try to give you some guardrails that would work potentially or have worked in other places. At, at the end of the day, if you have a member who just wants to go off the rails. You know, um. Courts generally view it as a political discussion and they let it go. And, and so, um. I, I was just, there was a, a discussion on the Attorney's List serve about a member who has literally been found underneath a statutory city. Um, to be removed and has been refusing to leave the meeting after the vote taken on it. Um, so, you know, there are small and large examples all across the country of. Bad behavior and how do you deal with it and what makes politics so tough today? So I'll do what I can.
So my suggestion, Mr. Mayor, if it works is, is let Carl and I work together. Uh, come back with a redraft of this and probably another work session. I don't want to put this off too far because it's been delayed for several months since, you can see my memo was first of September. Took me several months to finalize. Kind of the draft, what we talked about, and then it's taken several months to get to this point. So I do think we need to do it. We could show the, the procedural rules. We can get adopted fairly quickly. That's why I went through those first, so, but, but that's okay with council. Um, Carl obviously has got the. We're both lawyers, but he's got the, the institutional attorney, city attorney stuff that I haven't looked at in forty years or so. Or thirty years, whatever it's been. Okay, that works.
Yeah, we ready to adjourn back till six ten? All right, we will see you all in thirty minutes.
Thank you all. Appreciate your comments.
Thanks for all the work you've done on this, Charlie. Really appreciate that.
Thanks.